Yeah, great.
Of course, of course. I will say this.
Zoom side view section. You made the background.
Really?
Out of focus. You know, pickers all in focus and had the cameras level. You know. Yes. You and Martin were one of the ones that were concerned about.
Well, personally, I'm a huge white person. I mean, I've got a lot of experience on it. So I just.
Yeah.
Because he also. I think everybody else is like you. You know, they're, you're. On the lap.
Very, yeah. Thank you. Yes.
You know, this is what I mean. All, all. Any more?
Yeah. Let's go to them. He has to notice that.
When you read the channels, they miss this. But that's why he said.
Yeah. Something about the face, you know, that you can watch. And so. They didn't have to be naturally passed. Um, so that's. It's a running mark. The way. Which each purpose. But that's. You know what they go. All yours. Laura. Like.
Are we good? Here we go. All right. Good, Deborah. Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting of the Burlington City Council. Today is July 20th, 2021. This is our first regular council meeting in person, so we welcome everyone back. Appreciate everyone's patience as we've wrangled technology to help more people access this meeting as we continue to emerge from the coronavirus pandemic. Go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask that you silence all electronic devices and keep us on schedule tonight's meeting. It's my honor to deliver tonight's invocation. May we all bow our heads for a moment? We are thankful for this day that has been given to us, for its opportunities and for its challenges. We ask for strength, insight, wisdom, and guidance as we forge ahead, keeping in mind always the enduring values of life, exerting our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. Amen. This time we recognize our inner city clerk, Beverly Smith.
Good evening, members of council. It is my responsibility to remind you through duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask that there are any potential conflicts considered tonight's agenda items.
None.
Yes.
I had spoken with Ms. Hikes earlier today. She called me pursuant to the council's code of conduct and inquire regarding the situation involving the closing of the road at the request of the beer works. And I confirmed to her that she does have a conflict and should be allowed to recuse herself.
I move to recuse Mrs. Hikes from item four, I believe.
Second.
Motion to recuse Mayor Pro Tem Hikes from item number four made by Councilmember Ward, seconded by Councilmember Butler. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Mayor Pro Tem Hikes will be recused from item four. She does not need to leave the room at that point, but she won't be able to vote on the item. All right. Any other conflicts of interest? All right. Before council, we have minutes from our April 19th special meeting focused work session, May 3rd work session, May 4th city council meeting, and May 6th continued city council meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Councilmember Ward, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Hikes. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion is passed. I keep saying with a hand raise. I'm so used to that with the, with our Zoom meetings. Next, we have our consent agenda. These are add-on items for the consent agenda. We have item D onsite generation service agreement for the Ed Thomas Water Plant. Item E Flora Avenue Sewer Extension. Item F Resolution of Intent Right-of-Way Abandonment at Kirkpatrick Road. Do I hear a motion to approve these three consent agenda add-ons?
So moved. Second.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Owen, seconded by Councilmember Butler. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. Next, we have our agenda with the add-ons. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda with the add-ons?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda with the add-ons.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Butler, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Hikes. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. Next, we have our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about them, please let us know. Item A to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement between the city of Burlington and Dr. Jonathan E. Williams for full-time physician services contingent upon final approval by legal and risk management once satisfactory contract terms are agreed upon. Item B to award a lease purchase funding agreement to Truist Bank approving budget amendment 2022-2 general fund financed equipment. This includes a banking resolution, reimbursement resolution, and authorizes the mayor, director of finance, and city clerk to sign and execute the banking documents. Item C to approve budget amendment 2022-3 for fiscal year 2020 to 21, projects carried forward. Item D to approve an onsite service generation agreement between the city of Burlington and Duke Energy Carolina's LLC for Duke Energy to provide and maintain an onsite backup power system at the Ed Thomas Water Plant. Item E to approve property owners of Alamance County PID 126980 to extend the city of Burlington's public sewer system to serve 1620 and 1622 Flora Avenue, provided that they meet and follow all applicable codes and engineering standards of the city of Burlington and NCDEQ, including filing a voluntary annexation agreement prior to connecting to the proposed sewer extension. Item F to adopt a resolution of intent to permanently close unopened right-of-way off Kirkpatrick Road and set a date of public hearing for August 17th, 2021. Do I hear a motion to approve the foregoing consent agenda items?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Councilmember Owen, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Hikes. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. We have a number of public hearings this evening. The first public hearing tonight has been set to consider an application to designate Aurora Cotton Mills Finishing Plant Picket Hosiery Mill located at 741 East Webb Avenue as a local landmark designation. The designation includes the buildings only and excludes the parking lot and grass area. Is referenced as Alamance County Tax Identification Number 136857. And we begin by recognizing Principal Planner Jamie Lawson. Welcome, Jamie.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. This item is a request to designate 1.8 acre portion of the Aurora Cotton Mills Finishing Plant, also known as Picket Hosiery Mill, as a local landmark designation. The property is located at 741 East Webb Street and as referenced in Alamance County Tax Identification Number 136854. As you recall from your June 14th, 2021 work session, the landmark designation application was reviewed and recommended by the State Historic Preservation Commission. It was also reviewed and recommended by both the Historic Preservation Commission as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission. Staff recommends approval of this request as it is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and option one shown in bold and red in the consistency statement provided in your staff report. I believe representative from the application is here tonight as well, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Very good. Thank you, Jamie. Any questions from council regarding the site? The applicant like to include anything else?
I'm sorry.
Would you like to include anything else?
I don't really have anything to say.
There's a quite extensive amount of documentation in the agenda package, so.
Heather, Heather Fernbach, our historic consultant couldn't make it tonight, so please don't ask me any questions about the, but I have heard from many people that it's the most beautiful piece of work and really an interesting read on the history of the mill. And I wanted to say too that we've done a number of textile mills in Virginia and North Carolina and South Carolina. And Mr. Harris, the owner, has really, should be complimented on the condition of this mill. It's one of the finest mills I've ever been in in terms of condition. He's really maintained it well, and it's immaculate inside. So we're really excited about doing our second project in Burlington. May Hosiery was a terrific success. We hope this one will be too. So thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. We appreciate your commitment to the community and especially to the East Davis neighborhood. We appreciate your commitment to the Burlington community and to the East Davis Street neighborhood.
So we thank everybody. It's been a pleasure to come here and, you know, it's been a real pleasant experience. So thank you. Any other questions?
Counsel, any questions? No. Mr. Harris, would you like to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, esteemed councilmen, and all special guests. I'm Nim Harris, President and CEO of Picket Hosiery, and I'm not here to promote Picket Hosiery, but of grave importance to the accuracy of our city's history. Picket Hosiery was established in March of 1927 at 256 West Trade Street by some of the most reputable textile people in Burlington. The officers were Mr. Glenn Pickett, President, Mr. W. W. Sellers, Vice President, Mr. George Sharp, Secretary Treasurer, and stockholders Mr. Henry Dixon, Mr. A. B. Mangum, Mr. Buell Moser, Mr. Ralph Logan, and May Hosiery Mills. Over the course of the next 40 years, Pickett provided socks for companies like Burlington Industries, Holeproof Hosiery, JCPenney Company, Jockey International, Dirk Stocks, and W.T. Grant, Kmart, Walmart, and numerous others. In 1971, the Harris family bought the business and quickly expanded it, its operations to include dyeing and finishing. In 1983, we purchased the 8,600 square foot building known as the Baker Camack Building and moved its knitting, and we moved our knitting machines and finishing operations into the new home of Picket Hosiery. With its consolidated operations, Pickett has grown and supplied almost all of the current day quality retailers, including the limited, the Express, Structure, Gap, Old Navy, Banana Republic, Carhartt, Bass Pro, all branches of the military, United States military, Walmart, Costco, and many others. Pickett is blessed with an excellent management team with years of experience and employees, and employees who are wonderfully talented, knowledgeable, and represent the finest in the entire industry. Our employees are the hallmark of our company, and our quality is our testimony. Pickett maintains a well-run business and has been audited and approved by independent companies for Bass U., Gap, Old Navy, Banana Republic, Walmart, and so forth. Our sock brands are Durabilt Duracare, Durabilt Sports, and Durabilt Work. Our brands are specifically engineered for quality, durability, comfort, performance, and value. Our goal is to produce socks that perform at the highest levels under the toughest conditions at an affordable price. Our story is that our socks are manufactured by Picket Hosiery in North Carolina of yarn sourced and produced in the United States. Pickett has played an important part of Burlington for almost 100 years, and in the Baker Camack Building for 38 years. I respectfully request that Pickett be included in the name of the building with Aurora, Baker Camack, and Pickett. It is my hope that you will concur with my request. Thank you for your time and enjoyed being here, so.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Harris.
Yes.
For someone who's been here since 1975, I can't tell you how much we appreciate what you and your family has done with that business.
Well, thank you very much. I keep saying, telling people I'm going to keep working until the roll's called, but I don't know if I'm going to make it. They're quite that far.
Not only a quality product nationwide, but also provided a number of good jobs for many of our people. So again, thank you so much for what you've done.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your comments, especially coming from you. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Attorney, after those comments, I may be slightly biased as I'm currently wearing some Durabilt socks, so I don't know if that, I need to revenge myself for voting on this.
We'll let you get over that conflict, Neil. Just put your feet up on paper and advertise.
Any other questions regarding this public hearing before we begin to take comments? All right. This is a public hearing. If anyone in the audience would like to speak regarding item one on our public hearing agenda, please raise your hand. Yes. You have to step to the microphone and please state your name and address for the public record.
Hi, my name is Michelle Cobrick. Moved to Burlington in 16. We bought the crazy Easter egg house known as the T.W. Patterson House, 715 West Front Street. It's no longer the Easter egg. Please take a ride by. We've had it restored and painted. And we fully support the project. When we first came to the Star Commission the first time, the May Hosiery was on the agenda, and we spoke for it. If it had been finished, we would have rented there for the first year when we needed a roof, AC, heat, plumbing, electrical, you name it. But it wasn't available, so we had to rent over at the preserve until the house had one bathroom, a laundry room, and a kitchen, and that was my basics. Other than that, I could camp. So we're very supportive of adaptive reuse of commercial buildings especially. Burlington's got a pretty good stock of it, and the more developers are willing to take on the challenge and, believe me, doing 125-year-old house that was abused for 45 of that, it's a challenge, but it can be done. So I highly commend them for going for round two. Thank you, and we hope that they'll be attracting lots of residents and businesses and other developers who'd be willing to restore and reuse some of our wonderful commercial stock. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cobrick. To you.
Yeah, I just want to compliment you on what you've done to that house. I take my visitors by. It is just a gem. It's so beautifully done.
We love the house, and it goes slowly because other than those five trades, we've done all the work ourselves. And there are days that my husband scares the big Jesus out of me. He's 72, and he rebuilt, he redid those balconies with the curved roofs, and everything is exactly the way it was built. So it's trying, but it's fun. So thank you very much for your compliment.
It's a real asset.
Anyone else like to speak regarding public hearing number one on the agenda? All right. Seeing no further comments, do I hear a motion from council to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to close made by Councilmember Ward, seconded by Councilmember Butler. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion from council? Staff has provided on your blue sheet the recommended motions and word.
Mr. Mayor.
Good. Harold, you go ahead.
Now you go ahead. You was first.
No, Bob's had a couple first. You can take it.
Okay. I move we approve the request to designate the Aurora Cotton Mills Finishing Plant, Picket Hosiery Mill, as a local landmark designation. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed amendments with the comprehensive plan in that section two, character and identity, goal one, recommendation, one of the comprehensive plan, it encourages the preservation and continuing use of historic buildings, the district landmarks, and landscapes. The action is reasonable in the public interest in that section two, character, identity, to goal one, recommendation of the comprehensive plan, and supports the historic rehabilitation efforts of private property owners.
Councilmember Ward, you wish to second that?
My pleasure. Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Owen, seconded by Councilmember Ward. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed unanimously. Thank you very much. We appreciate having you all here. At this time, we move to item two on our public hearings. It has been set to hear a presentation on amendments to the architectural and historic design standards that need to comply with the North Carolina General Statute, Chapter 160D. Just I'm all again here from our Principal Planner, Jamie Lawson.
Good evening again, and what a pleasure to see you all in person. As you may recall from the June 14th work session meeting, staff is recommending changes to the architectural and historic standards. These standards are applicable to properties that are in the local historic districts. The only change that we're seeking is to replace the word sidelines with standards to be consistent and compliant with Chapter 160D in our Unified Development Ordinance. Historic Preservation Commission recommended approval of these modifications at their May 11th, 2021 meeting, and the Planning Commission also recommended unanimous approval on May 24th, 2021. We haven't received any comments on this request, and staff recommends approval as it's consistent with option one, as shown in bold and red in the consistency statement. And I will be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Good. Councilmembers, any questions regarding item two on our public hearing agenda?
Nope.
All right. This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak? Anyone on this side of the room? Seeing no comments, do I hear a motion from council to close public hearing?
So moved.
Motion to close made by Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, seconded by Councilmember Butler. Any questions regarding the motion to close? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. Public hearing is now closed. Staff has provided recommended motions on the pink sheet in front of you. Do I hear a motion from council regarding this item?
I move we approve the request to amend the architectural and historic design standards. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed amendments with the comprehensive plan in that section four, land use, goal one, recommendation five of the comprehensive plan calls for an update of the Unified Development Ordinance. Section four, land use, goal one, recommendation five of the comprehensive plan calls for ensuring sound land planning decisions that are consistent with the vision of the plan. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that section four, land use, goal two, recommendation four of the comprehensive plan addresses confusion, conflicts, and obsolescence of the zoning code through a new Unified Development Ordinance. Section four, land use, goal two, recommendation four of the comprehensive plan, a new UDO will be modern, graphically intensive, and user-friendly from both a public petitioner and administrative perspective.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, seconded by Councilmember Butler. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed unanimously. All right. Next, we'll move on to item three. A public hearing has been set to consider an application to rezone three properties from medium density residential, or MDR, to general business, GB zoning district. The properties are located on the southeast corner of Maple Avenue and Hanford Road intersection, addressed as 2620 and 2604 Maple Avenue, and are referenced as Alamance County Tax Identification Numbers 132512, 132515, and 132511. This time, we recognize our Director of Planning and Transportation, Mike Nun.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good to see you. What you see before you tonight is a request. Area, just to get everyone familiar with where we're speaking of, the interstate obviously here, south of, this is Maple Avenue. This is south of the interstate. This is the current Shell Station in this area, and these parcels you see identified here are the rezoning request. It's approximately 1.49 acres of a combined parcel from medium density residential to general business. And for reference, you can see it's along the Maple Avenue corridor there at the corner of Hanford Road and Maple Avenue. The comprehensive plan calls for the area to be a neighborhood commercial. Proposed rezoning request is consistent with the land use plan and is compatible with the existing commercial and residential uses in this area. And I'll show that to you here quickly. This is the parcels again. You can see this light pink, light purple is our neighborhood commercial area. The rezoning request is compatible. We did receive one question about traffic in the area, so we went out, Brian Tennant went out, our traffic engineer, went out last week and looked at peak hour traffic in the area, and based on the data that we collected at this intersection, we're at a level service B. You know, we on it, we're on a report card system. You want to be As and Bs. If you get into a CD and E and F, it's something you want to start to mitigate. We found that 96% of the traffic was able to clear the intersection on each green cycle. So again, that's very good. That's a level service B. This also could be impacted by truck traffic, so we looked at truck traffic as well. An average of 12 trucks in the morning, about 13 at the lunch hour, and again, 18 in the PM peak hours. So it's not out of the ordinary for any other intersection in the city.
Is that total trucks or total per hour?
That's average per hour. Yeah, average for in those two-hour periods in the AM lunch and the PM. So we didn't, we didn't see anything to mitigate or change signal timing. Again, this is just existing conditions. But to note that this is a straight rezoning, and if any development proposal were to be, were to be submitted, we would go through the UDO TRC review process. If it requires a traffic impact analysis, that would be a part of the review process, and that covers a property that's going to generate an additional 1,000 trips during the day, the entire day period, or 100 trips in the peak hour. So if any of those thresholds are met, we would have that TIA performed, and that would give us some mitigation measures. Turn lanes, traffic signal timing, anything that need to be improved for that development to occur there. And that would just be at the time of development. At the May 24th meeting of Planning and Zoning Commission, it was unanimously approved to recommend this project. Staff also recommends this request with option one that's shown. I hope it's still bold. It may still be in red on your, on your paper as well. I'll be glad to answer any additional questions, and Mr. Curtis Little is here, the applicant tonight, to answer questions that you may have for him.
Very good. Mr. Little, would you like to speak?
Mayor, members of council, thank you for considering our application, and Mike, thank you for speaking on our behalf. Pretty much as Mike said, we're, we're looking to rezone these three pieces of property currently owned by Rodney Hewitt and Wes Golden. There is an empty lot and then a house that is currently being rented on Mr. Golden's property that will be part of the rezoning, and our intent is to build a restaurant at some point in the future. So if you have any further questions, happy to answer.
Thank you. Any questions from council before we begin the public hearing? If any questions do come up, you'll have a chance afterwards to address them. All right. This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak regarding item three? Anyone on this side of the room want to speak? Hearing no comments, do I hear a motion from council to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to close by Councilmember Ward, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Hikes. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Public hearing is now closed on this item. Staff has provided recommended motions on your yellow sheet. Do I hear a motion from council regarding this item?
I move we approve the request to rezone from MDR, medium density residential, to GB, general business. The properties are located in the southeast corner of Maple Avenue and Hanford Road intersection, addressed as 2620 and 2604 Maple Avenue, and are referenced as Alamance County Tax Identification Numbers 132512, and 132515, and 132511, in no particular order there. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan in that the future land use map in section four, land use of the comprehensive plan calls. Plan calls for this area to have commercial and residential uses. The request is compatible with adjacent residential and commercial uses. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that, the Comprehensive Plan calls for commercial and residential uses in the area, and the request is compatible with existing zoning and land uses in the area.
Do I hear a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Owen, seconded by Councilmember Butler. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Little, we appreciate you being here, and we look forward to your investment in our community.
Absolutely, thank you, Council, thank you, Mayor.
Next, we have new business items before council. Item Four on our agenda, City Council will consider temporary closing a portion of Main Street on Saturday, August 8th, 2021, from 2:00 p.m. until 7:00 p.m. During the Burlington Beer Works owner's social special event contingent upon meeting all requirements of the special event permit application process. As previously motioned, Mayor Protam Hikes has recused from this item. This time, we recognize Recreation and Parks Special Event Supervisor Emily Crowe.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, great to see you all in person and not virtual anymore. I'm here on behalf of Burlington Beer Works and the Special Events Permitting Committee to ask for the approval of the street closure. They've gone through the permitting process, insurance is on file, and the committee recommends that it's approved.
Any questions from council regarding this? The scope of this meets basically the same thing they were doing during the pandemic as far as the closures, which we didn't see any adverse traffic pattern.
No, had no issues, small closure on Main Street for about five hours.
Any other questions from council? Do I hear a motion from council regarding this item?
I make a motion that we approve the request for the temporary street closing to extend the premises of Burlington Beer Works during their special event.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Butler, seconded by Councilmember Owen. Any questions regarding the motion approved? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed. Thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
Item Five on our new business, City Council will consider adopting a resolution to accept coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, or American Rescue Plan Act Funds, not ARPA, in the amount of $11,516,517 from the US Treasury, and adopt Budget Amendment 2022-1, American Rescue Plan Act Grant Fund Project Ordinance, to establish a new fund and budget account for the funds received. This time, we recognize Finance Director Peggy Reese.
Good evening, Council, thank you for the opportunity to be here, to be seen, and to see you, all of you. We're once more addressing the ARPA funds. One of the first things that is required by the governing body of a local government unit that is receiving the funds is to pass a resolution accepting the funds. So that is in your packet tonight. Also, we have an ordinance establishing the project fund for these funds. However, what we're recommending tonight is that we just have a generic revenue account and a generic expense account. If you'll notice, at the actual project ordinance, we do not have any account numbers established yet, that's because we don't intend to establish any, this just gives us the basic beginning of the ordinance. Finally, I thought Friday was, July 16th was the issue date of the final ruling, but no, that was the final date to send questions to the Treasury. And so sometime in the future, there will be a final ruling. I've been in a couple of classes the past couple of days, and Kara Malonzy of the School of Government said she has no idea when the final rulings will be issued. Susan McCullen of the LGC stated that the LGC recommends that local governments wait before they decide what to do with these funds, because the state is getting funds to, and a project that a governing board may adopt, the state might send money to that local government unit to do that project. And so rather than jumping ahead, that's their recommendation, is to wait to see what the state is going to spend their funds on. They may be sending money for a project in our area to fund it fully or just partially, or maybe seeking matching grants, but that's where we are, that's what we have before you tonight. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Peggy. Any questions from council?
Peggy, I'm sure that both those sessions of word leveraging was used an awful lot between the state, federal, county, and local governments, which can truly take a project to another level that can have a much larger impact on a community, if indeed, all those agencies contend to work together.
I also wanted to pass on one more thing, that reminded me, it is not just looking at the lost revenue in the general fund, we need to look at the lost revenue across all our funds, unless it's a federally funded grant or state-funded grant. So anyway, that's a little bit of a larger task that we're working on.
So water and...
Not water, not the utilities, but oddly enough, stormwater, the stormwater revenues are included.
But it does appear there's some movement, which a lot of us have been asking a lot of questions about, about replacement of water and sewer lines, and then would the repaving of the streets be covered? And it appears now there's progression with that, where it will maybe approved.
Yes, sir, my understanding is that because paving of the streets is something that is allowed statutorily by the City of Burlington, that with our lost revenue, we could choose to do that. I don't, I'm not aware of any questions on that. There is lots of questions about whether you can extend water and sewer lines for expansion.
Peggy, it's my understanding that some communities, I think particularly larger cities, have a special reporting designation where they have to lock in some of their uses by, I think, August?
You just have to report what you have spent the monies on, and so if you, it's August 10th, I believe, and if you, anybody who receives money directly, like the City of Burlington will be, you just have to report what you spent the money on, and of course, we'll be all zeros, because we, no decisions have been made.
Okay, all right, so that doesn't rush us to any decisions, does it?
Those deadlines is to make determination on spending items by the end of '24, correct?
You have to obligate, so POs have to be issued by December 31 of '24, and they have to be spent by December 31 of '26.
Other council questions regarding this item? Do I hear a motion regarding adopting these funds?
I make a motion to adopt the resolution to accept the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds of the American Rescue Plan Act and adopt the American Rescue Plan Act Grant Fund Ordinance, Budget Amendment 2022-01.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to approve made by Councilmember Ward, seconded by Mayor Protam Hikes. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed.
Thank you, Council.
That concludes our regular agenda items. We have a number of folks who have signed up for public hearing tonight. Just a reminder, you have five minutes to speak. First on the list is Charles Beasley. Charles, if you could, step to the microphone and state your address for the record. Welcome.
My name's Charlie Beasley, my address is 1134 Card draw Street, Burlington. Two items, one, the first two are actually from the previous couple of council meetings. I'd requested an update on a crime report that the previous chief of police had issued. I was told it was going to be posted or sent to me, I never saw anything of it, was asked for an update on that. And then the federal grant for hiring six more officers, that kind of came up and then went away really quick. I was wondering if anybody on council had an update for that as well. That is kind of a big deal for me, I don't know why we wouldn't aggressively go after that. The other item, kind of related to the recent E. coli boil water notice scare, not really a concern overall, I realize that. Has this prompted any kind of review of the city's infrastructure overall in terms of just water and sewer, and I know you guys have made some comments about it in the last few minutes in the meeting? What is the state of our current water systems? Because why was that pipe being replaced? How old was it? Just, I guess my comments are more questions for you guys than anything else.
Very good.
I was all.
Manager, would you be able to follow up on the first two items, the crime report and the BPD grant with Charlie after the meeting?
Yeah, we can do that. Chief, I can do that after the meeting, yes, sir.
Very good. Council, I asked Bob Patterson, potentially during council comments tonight, if there are amenable to it, to give us a little update on the water. So Charlie, if you want to stick around until after a couple more minutes, and then Bob will give us an update on some of that. Very good. Next, we have Mimi Boyet.
Boyet.
Boyet, I'm trying to read your handwriting, so welcome, Mimi. If you want to step to the microphone and state your name and address, or just address.
So my name is Mimi Boyet, and I have a ministry called Jubilee. With 75% of us living from paycheck to paycheck, we all qualify slaves to death regardless of the color of our skin. So I have figured out a way to implement Jubilee in today's modern society, and it was Dr. Ben Carson who said that if he won the presidency, he would put God's economic plan on the worldwide web. So I've been working with an economist out of Duke University, and I figured out a way to do that, a way for us to go global with our eyes wide open and make each state its own tax-free entity. So the state governments become government corporations, and they actually compete with big business instead of asking for their donations. So I'm very proud of this, and I have a flag for unity. In fact, every song in Hollywood and Nashville is singing about my ministry, and they have been since 2015, when I went to prison on the Fourth of July for trying to bring the Confederate flag down. There, I learned that mass incarceration and mass desperation are 100% true, and had a calling to declare Jubilee. So the songs are singing about me, now there's this Rabbi Jonathan Kohn that has written his fifth New York Times bestseller called The Harvinger II, in which he says, "God told him the trumpets would be coming from a strange and unusual place, and they are, they're coming from Hollywood and Nashville, exactly where rabbis and priests would never think to look." So the same people that set the Africans free from apartheid with the song "We Are the World" are trying to do the same thing right now. And we just have to get loud enough, because as a daughter of a military diplomat who went everywhere to get the soldiers out, I can tell you beyond a shadow of a doubt that our government knew the minute that COVID-19 went viral. They knew the minute, and they waited three months to close the borders. And Pelosi's husband sold all his stock before it got here, and Trump didn't even bother to show up for the hearing. This is exactly what corporations do when they file bankruptcy, they start spending money wildly, and this is exactly what is happening with our own government. So I would like to fly my love flag and call attention to my movement, standing on the word and bringing the world together, because God loves the world, on your eagle in the Arbour Park that is covered with a tarp. It did not come down on Memorial Day, and it did not come down on the Fourth of July, but it is the acceptable year of the Lord. I have come to set the captives free, to share the good news, and to declare this the acceptable year of the Lord. So I would like your help in hanging the flag on the eagle, because the eagle doesn't fly at the end of times, but the loved dove will.
Thank you, Ms. Boyet.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Last on my sheet is Nim Harris, I believe Nim spoke during the public hearing, so we'll conclude our public hearing period. Next is City Council comments. City Council, if you want, will yield the floor to Bob Patterson. Bob?
Before we do, I've got a couple of things, I just want to be sure I didn't jump in front of anybody else, and certainly, I am curious about Bob's comments as well, but kind of echoing on what Mr. Beasley brought up, Assistant Chief Gaddis came to us with the grant request, and I would like an update. I had that on my list of items, just where are we at with that grant request? But I guess more importantly, the purpose for it, I remember vividly, it was for the belief that we needed a special task force to really concentrate solely on a particular set of criminal activities, most important being the series of drive-by shootings that we've had, some discharge firearms, and so forth, so on, and if we could get an update on that. But the second piece of that, a couple of days ago, we had another incident, we had four people wounded from gunshots, two, I believe, were teenagers, and obviously, right after that, there was another shooting on Morningside that presumably was a carryover from the first event. So, you know, this is, obviously, it was something that hit BPD's radar, they'd been working on it from trying to get ahead of it, trying to really engrain themselves in really policing against that at a higher level, and it's my belief that regardless of the grant request, based on Assistant Chief Gaddis and his comments, that maybe we need to look at this thing, even if it's a straight budgetary item, how we can create this task force for this particular purpose. So in addition to maybe getting an update on the grant, I would like us to put this on the agenda at the work session, just to really see in detail, more so than the grant request, just what it is that the police department thinks we need to do, how we need to approach this problem, and more importantly, how much funding is it going to take to get us to a point where we can get ahead of the curve and not behind the curve. It's really, quite simply, it's just time we give our law enforcement, sworn officers the tools to stop it, and I just think the timing's really important coming on the heels of that grant request, but more importantly, there's a lot of other reasons that we need to look at this thing deeper. And then, secondly, just to kind of dovetail on that a little bit, I had the pleasure of attending the most recent CPAP meeting. I was very impressed with, Harden was there, Chief Kearns interim, Chief Kearns, and a couple of others from BPD. I was very impressed with the committee, I was very impressed with our staff, really the transparency of information. It was the first meeting that I've been able to attend, we've all tried to attend some, I know most everybody has. But it was really comforting and just beneficial to see how much the committee members were interested in our vacancies and our staffing model at the PD, and really, their concern over, just candid conversation over, all right, we know we have this many vacancies, and we know we had a few people apply, and they were really engaged with that. And, you know, that was really important. And while we were there, and I've seen it, we've all seen it before, but Assistant Chief Gaddis came out with the pillars and the strategic plan, and we went through that in great detail, and it was a good follow-up for me, it's been a while since I looked through this. But, you know, I noted, this strategic plan is 2019 to 2021, I know we're already working on kind of what's next, but I noted in Pillar Three that we had a data-driven deployment of sworn civilian and volunteer staff, that was in Pillar Number Three, and the strategic direction states to operate under a data-driven staffing model. It also says to deploy uniform staff to ensure public safety and then maximize the use of volunteers. And then there are action steps in here, the action steps really dovetail very nice. The action step B1 states the same, and really subordinates Pillar One, which says helping to ensure public safety, reduce crime, and improve quality of life. So this data-driven staffing model really dovetails into the grant request, and more importantly, what our own leadership team has told us we need to be doing, both in a strategic plan and then in real-world policing with these activities that we're dealing with. And then if you read this thing further, it talks about the recruiting and retention of sworn officers and volunteers. And I'm really concerned that the model has shifted, and that we may not be doing enough financially to give our team the monetary tools to, one, achieve their strategic plan, but to, two, what can we do to really financially assist interim Chief Kearns and his leadership team on the task? City Manager Gordon Watkins gave us all a Burlington Chief of Police Position Analysis Questionnaire, five items. Item Number Three says, "What immediate challenge will a new police chief need to address to meet your expectations and move the department to the next level of professional service?" In my own commentary, I felt like that the immediate challenge would be the topic of recruitment and retention of sworn officers, along with growing our leadership team from within. We've got some key people that are on the cusp of retirement, so being sure we backfill that is extremely important. So, you know, we just adopted a resolution to bring in 11 and a half million dollars, we've got to be sure what we want to do with that. But we've got two emerging needs, one is a... One is a task force that we're trying to staff up for, and there's a grant hung out there that we're going to get an update on. But two is, what financially do we need to do to see that we've got the financial tools and our leadership team's tool belt to retain and recruit so that we can staff up 100%? And, you know, the world of recruitment and employment is changing rapidly, and I think our law enforcement team is, was dealing with this prior to the shortage of folks in the workplace. So those two items are how on my list. I'd like for both of those to be at a work session of council, would so agree, and just see, Chief, what we need to do to be sure we've got enough money, we're doing what we need to do to retain who we have, create that leadership backfield, and recruit new ones. And then this task force, is this grant going to come through? Do we know anything about it? And if not, what do we need to look at that with?
And I'd like to add to Eric's little checklist of things to do. Obviously, we compete with neighboring agencies for police officers. It's been like this for, you know, since I became City Manager in 2003. Our first battle was with, not battle, but we had a number of officers leave for the Guilford County Sheriff's Department council, and there is at least one member on this council, two members. Mr. Huffman was on this council, that then voted for a fairly substantial salary increase for police officers, and that helped. But honestly, with what Jim mentioned earlier with the gun violence and frankly, the continuing drug issues, these are tough jobs for people. We don't have nearly the amount of respect we should have for these young people, young men and women, who every day go out and see things that most of us don't want to ever If we can't recruit and maintain officers, we can continue recruiting, but unless you have some retention to build experience within the system, and Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, the level of success is always going to be limited. Experience is absolutely essential in policing, police staffing, unquestioned. So, you know, I agree with Jim. I think we need to take a look at this thing from a big-picture standpoint. You know, this past weekend, the shootings over in North Church Street, the shootings in Beaumont, and I don't read every one of them, but it appears to me that a high percentage of all these shootings is of young people. Young people with handguns. And I don't know if any of us have the idea of how to stop that, or how to, you know, make that stop or occur. We can certainly work with people, but, you know, if you live in one of those communities, think about how you feel when you, at night, or go out, if you're just going to the grocery store or whatever, you take your child out, the child out planting the yard, if indeed we continue to see these drive-by shootings. And I look for you guys, I'm not sure we know what the drive-by shootings are about. I'm sure there's been some issues beforehand that's created this, but, you know, this is something that's not here, it's nationally, but it's here too. And we need to figure out the best way we can to try to deal with it in the best manner. And I think we should be open of considering a number of different options in terms of our staffing and how we staff up.
If I could add into that, since the events of this past weekend, I've been looking at what other communities were doing, and I'd like to add into that work session agenda request to, first, evaluate the Cure Violence Model and what some of our neighboring communities, Durham's got Bull City United that they've put in place in the community. But if you're not familiar with the Cure Violence Model, it's looking at the other holistic side of not just throwing more money and more officers at the problem, but looking at detection and interruption of those events. What we're seeing is retaliation. So how do you interrupt those retaliatory events? How do you really create healing in the community? How do you influence behavior change? And then, how do you change community norms? We're seeing changes, like Harold's talking about, where young people are settling their disputes with handguns. It used to just be fisticuffs in the back lot, and now it's handguns. And so that's become a community norm in some ways. And we can throw more officers at that, and we can throw more people in jail, but we could also look at how do we change that community norm? How do we really make progress in our community and heal? And so I'd really like for that discussion to also involve the Cure Violence Model. And I think some of what we did with Youth Solutions was beginning to touch on that, is how do we create positive opportunities for youth in our community to prevent them from heading towards a violent outcome? So if I could add that into that discussion, I'm very supportive of.
Yeah, well, I think it's important to note that our leadership team has already formulated a plan, and I think we need to support them on the plan they formulated and then expand, if necessary, based on what their research, their expertise, and their tenure in dealing with this. And I'm sure they've canvassed other municipalities and other PDs to get ideas and to get information. So if we can just get a little deeper dive into what it is we're trying to do, and then how do we fund it, and let's get behind this thing and get ahead of the violence that we're dealing with.
Council members, any other questions or requests regarding this top for that work session? Jim, are you open for our work session next month?
Yes.
Okay. So for our August work session.
Mayor, let me, back to that schedule. Help me on our schedule now. The first meeting in August, we normally have the police night out, is that correct?
The national night out.
National night out, that's still on, right?
So our work session will be the 16th of August.
16th of August, okay.
So that gives us about a month. Manager, chief, is that reasonable for you all to bring something?
Yes, sir.
We'll get something together.
Yes, sir.
We can always continue the discussion into September, VP. But at least to begin that.
If I may just ask a question, Mr. Butler, too. I think some quick overview for council of strategic pillars, maybe at the beginning of that, go through that document.
Sure. I mean, it is a good, it is a good, first of all, it really reminded me of how well-thought-out our policing model is at multiple levels. So, and it's not, this thing is very concise, very to the point, easy to read, easy to understand. The narratives are tremendous. I'm looking forward to seeing the next one. But there's just, you know, if you look through this thing, you learn one other thing. When they come to you with something, they've done their homework, they know what they need, and they're asking, and they don't ask with friggin' minded. So they've got mind-divided attention on you guys.
Councilman Butler, also, the community played a huge role in the development of that plan.
Correct.
Oh, at numerous meetings, including Spanish.
And that was an effort of the entire police leadership team. It's not just spur-of-the-moment reaction. One other item I like to put on as part of the work session is last night, and I wouldn't be vigilant in this one, the presentation that Ms. Laster made on the community involvement program, which I think has got some very interesting options there, but I'd like to put that on the agenda for the work session to talk more about it. My concern is that, as much like we are in police, we've lost so many staff people, how many more times can we put some of our departments of one or two people out in charge of things when they simply can't do their job now because of vacancies? And we face that in this city. We've lost a significant amount of really good people. You cannot just replace experience like, you know, I wish we could. So I like to get more into that program and determine the basic philosophy of it in terms of, as I understood it, we're trying to help communities form their own associations for whatever reasons. And I think the comparison was made to the police night out in terms of the communities that made, that had groups formed or whatever, very informal groups. But I like to get involved in that because I think also, if I'm not mistaken, there's a financial number put in there of a city, of city tax money. You know, how would that be used to do this? And what is our overall objectives that we're trying to reach here? And I'm not trying to pile on the police here, but I think that the police got to be, has to be part of that discussion. Because to me, the concept of the night out with the various communities that have their groups, that's a possible avenue that some of this could work through. But I, maybe I just missed some things last night. I would like to have that discussed more in depth at the work session in August.
I also have some questions about it, and then I'm getting them formulated, and I'll get them on to Harden. You know, I'd like to have a dress at the same time.
Other council comments? Bob, if you want to give us an update on our water boil advisory, how we got there, and what happens now?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Maybe before I dive right into the event last week, just a quick, basic overview of how we treat water and how the water system works. So we have, of course, the two water supplies, like Macintosh and Cam MacIntoney. That water is pumped from the lakes to the water treatment plants, Macintosh Plan or Ed Thomas Plant. At both of those plants, they function very similarly. They take that raw water, that lake water that has sediment, organic material, and exposed to the environment, so there's, you know, living organisms and bacteria in the water. Comes into the treatment process, the solids are settled out, we add chlorine in the process to disinfect and kill those microorganisms. The water goes through further treatment, it's filtered, we add a little bit more chlorine, and we add ammonia, which reacts with that chlorine, to make the chlorine in the distribution system last much longer. So chlorine is a very highly effective disinfectant, it's an oxidizer, and so it'll kill most of those potential pathogens, or will kill all of those pathogens. So that's the typical treatment process. And so water goes out into the distribution system, fills the water tanks, and then we have it for use at our taps when we turn the faucet or flush the toilet. So under state and federal requirements, we are required to, on a monthly basis, take 60 samples throughout the distribution system from that treated water and test that for two types of bacteria, under a rule that's called the revised total coliform rule. The original rule was developed or passed by the federal government in the late '80s, and then it was subsequently revised, that's why it's called the revised rule. Most recently, the rule we're operating under was effective in 2016. So we take those 60 samples per month at various locations. We have 203 sample sites throughout the city that are representative of the city geographically throughout the city. Some are indoors in businesses, some are outdoors at exterior faucets generally. Often that is, or the exterior faucets are often available and have limited disruption to the property owner. They don't have to be home, they don't have to let us in the door to take a sample at their house, things like that. So we take these 60 samples. So the process is, our guys that are taking the sample come from our lab, they run the water to flush out the line. They have chlorine solution that they spray and disinfect the faucet. And then we have a special bottle that is used to take 100 milliliters of water, and that's capped off. They go to the next site, take the next sample. Generally, we do about 15 a week. We don't do all 60 in one day or all 60 a week. It's taken back to the lab, and the particular test that we use, then you add a reagent to the bottle, and you have to wait 24 hours for that media to show if there is bacteria present, it will turn, if there's total coliform present, it will turn yellow. If there's E. coli present under ultraviolet light, it will glow. So the, this total coliform is naturally occurring bacteria that's found in the soil and water, and typically killed off in the disinfection process. It is used by the, through the regulations, as an indicator, they call it, that there is potential pathogens. There may be something, there's some reason why your disinfection process may not be optimal. And then E. coli is a specific bacteria which many of us know can cause diarrhea and other issues and make people ill. So the process is, we take the sample, set it up in the lab, wait 24 hours. If it doesn't change color, doesn't glow, it's negative, which is good. Over, you know, overwhelmingly, whenever we do the sampling, that's the case. It's a negative sample, and that's what we want. This shows our system is functioning properly. Occasionally, we will have a total coliform positive. So again, that is an indicator. This is only the second time that I'm aware of that we've ever had an E. coli positive. So the process either way is if you do have a positive test, then within 24 hours, you have to take another sample and rerun the test. When we go out and rerun the test, of course, we flush that line again, we disinfect it, and try to optimize, make sure that there's, you know, no chance or limited chance that we get a positive, right, result. Reasons for the first positive, it could be, you know, somehow the sample was contaminated when the sample taker was taking it. We've actually had bottles that had a bad batch of the reagent in it in the first place, and when we retested, had negative samples. So you take the first test, if it's positive, then you have to take the second test, wait another 24 hours. If it's negative, then all is good. On a total coliform test, if you get a total positive, a total coliform positive again, that is not in and of itself an alarming event. The process is, we resample that, and we have to do a study to determine why. Usually, if we, there has been a couple of times where we get that second positive, and we'll test, flush, come back, get a negative sample. And it usually comes back to there was something wrong with that sample location, that faucet. But we have to, and all these items are reported to the state. The instance that we had this time was the second test came back positive for E. coli. So that is the worst-case scenario. A positive E. coli triggers the boil water event. The state takes the approach that, out of an abundance of caution to protect public health, if E. coli is found in one location, even though that day we took other tests that were negative, it's found in one location, there is no certainty that it is not in other parts of the system, that it has not spread from that area where you found the test. So once we got that second positive test, we were in contact with our public water supply regional engineer in Winston-Salem, had a call with his supervisors in Raleigh to establish what is the process that we need to do. This is a very rare occurrence to have the total, have the E. coli positive test. It happened in High Point in 2016. The regional engineer in Winston was there, so he had some experience with what the process would be. And essentially, the process is, we need to be prepared to issue the boil water and be prepared to try to identify why we got that total positive E. coli test. So... So we, our crews immediately went out, began flushing, we removed the meter at that location, because we, again, we were pretty certain that it's something wrong with that sample faucet. Other times when we've had these positive results on the total coliform, it comes back to we find that there is something in that faucet, especially these outdoor faucets that are maybe not used as frequently by the homeowner, we don't have any idea. But there's usually some kind of insects that build a nest, or something has crawled up in there, or somehow, we've even found leaves and debris, and that can build and cause the bacteria. So we took the meter out of the service line, we flushed with a pump, flushed the service line of this, it was an apartment complex that had individual meters for each unit. So we were able to flush that service line with a super chlorinated, very high chlorine level solution through the service line, through all the fixtures in the house. So we ran it into, you know, through the sink, through the hot water heater, flushed everything at the house. At the same time, we contacted the property management manager and made arrangements to replace that exterior faucet.
Bring it with you tonight?
I do have it here. So this is the particular, your standard frost-free, your no-freeze faucet. The wall would be here, and this is exposed to the, and the handle was here, it was a complete faucet, the handle got broken during the repairs. So the way these work, the frost-free, when you turn it on, you know, water runs out. When you turn it off, the water will drain out so that it doesn't freeze. And the way that functions, that shut-off valve is way back here, where this nut is. So once you shut the water off, this whole, from the end of the faucet spigot, hose bib, whatever your term you like to use, from this point to this point is open to the atmosphere through the hole. So that is a source where critters, bugs, little animals can enter that faucet. During the second flushing, this is, when we flushed it again, you know, after we've already flushed it after the two samples, when we tore the meter apart and flushed it again, we got some debris out, and some what looked like insect parts, and some other probably like organic material that was, must have been packed in there somehow, that just flowing the faucet didn't flush it out. So we're fairly certain that that was the cause. So after we flushed it with the super chlorinated, replaced the faucet, we flushed it again and chlorinated it, flushed it down to regular water levels, where we tested for chlorine, got everything back to normal levels. At that point in time, we took more bacteria, or more samples, and I forgot to mention when we have to do that second test, not only do we have to test at the site, but we have to test upstream and downstream, so neighboring properties within five service lines. And I think in this case, we were next door. But on that second test, the faucet came back positive, then both next-door samples came back negative. Again, an indicator that that's probably the culprit. However, again, the state views this as a public health issue potentially, and with an abundance of caution, we are required to issue a boil water notice system-wide unless we can show that this is hydraulically isolated. And so it's still that potential that it could have spread. So fast forward, we did all the repairs, flushed it, took one set of samples Thursday early evening, another set Thursday night, waited the 24 hours for both sets, they came back positive, I mean, came back negative, and so we were able to lift the boil water notice. Throughout this time, you know, a tremendous effort by city staff across the city, not just my team, to do our best effort to communicate the issue, keep staff and the city and residents And just about every department shipped in to answer phones, to distribute the water. So it was a tremendous team effort to resolve this issue. So in answer to Mr. Beasley's question, this is the pipe, it was not one of the pipes in the distribution system that we were replacing or anything. It was particularly at that sample, it wasn't a, just random, we're going to test this sample or report a problem, it was part of a systematic, monthly testing that we do that revealed this.
And more importantly, it was not our core water supply?
Correct.
Which some of the misinformation out there said that our water supply was contaminated, and that was absolutely positively not the case.
No. Throughout this, you know, we do multiple tests per day at each treatment plant. Chlorine levels were well above, or, you know, well within the range of acceptable. Again, indicators that there's not a problem system-wide, but, you know, from a public health standpoint, and me as the director and as a professional engineer, it's my duty also to safeguard public health. So we, you know, at that point of that second test, we had to take every step correctly to make sure, you know, we did not have any issues. The overall, Mr. Beasley, the overall condition of our infrastructure is average for, you know, cities, I guess, in North Carolina. We have a lot of pipes that need, that are in line to be replaced, we have a lot of infrastructure that's new. Generally, it's in good shape. Counsel has been very good through the years to establish a, what we could call a pay-as-you-go capital replacement. So I think approximately, I was sitting there trying to do it in my head, but I'd say roughly $3 million this year to either rehab or replace sewer lines and water lines. About 1.9 is one large sewer line that's being rehabbed, but we annually have a program to replace water lines, and those are kind of some of the smaller ones. We call it the two-inch replacement program, they can be two-inch or four-inch, that are older lines, that are the ones that we often have problems with line breaks and whatnot. So we try to upgrade those and get those out of the system. We have another program that, a lot of the older areas that were kind of mill, established mill villages, they have smaller six-inch diameter sewer lines that may be in backyards or a few are under houses, so we have money budgeted to try to replace those and correct those, and bring those up, the standard design is now is an eight-inch diameter, because it'll carry more volume. So we do have those programs in the works. We're always looking at ways to stretch those dollars. Of course, prices go up, and, but, you know, we try to stay ahead as best we can with the infrastructure replacement.
Bob, back to this situation there with the outside faucet. I would think that a large majority of the homes in this city has those. I would also think that in many of the homes, those faucets are really low to the ground with mulch around it, which critters and everything goes, crawls around. Is it something we need to consider, just to ask our residents to flush those lines, to turn that? My question is, in this particular situation here, it appeared that spigot or that particular area of spigot had not been turned on in a while, because water would not come through.
So it, you know, water flowed through it, but there was still some buildup that was not getting flushed.
Right. In terms of, what could we recommend to our residents that they could flush those outside, flush those outside spigots?
Certainly the ones we use for sampling, but...
Yeah. Good point.
Yeah, so, you know, there's a meme out there about, you know, we used to drink water out of the hose, and we survived, right? So, I mean, I did it when I was a kid, from my dad, my parents' well. But this is a case where, this shows an example of, you know, you can have bacteria in that faucet, so, you know, you want to keep it flushed, especially if there's that potential you're going to use it to drink from. At the same time, another way that it could be contaminated is, if you're using your hose to wash the car, and you have the hose, you know, whatever, you don't have an end on the hose, it's just your open hose, and you're using the faucet to turn it on and off, if there is something that happens in the distribution system, that, like a line break, and it pulls a vacuum, it could suck that soapy water that, you know, at least back into your faucet, if not further, and that can create issues. So just be mindful, you know, how you use your hose, disconnect it, don't leave it sitting in a bucket of water. All those little steps can help minimize however small that possibility is that you can introduce contamination to your spigot or our distribution system. Like I said, throughout this event, we had good chlorine levels, we did not think that it was a widespread event, but we had to follow what our state guidance was.
Did you not test upstream and downstream in that particular occasion?
Yes. And I left that out, too. When we did the retest, after we made the repairs and everything, not only did we do upstream, downstream, we did the kitchen sink at that location on that sample and the resamples, we did the neighborhood, and that's the basis that we had to build enough samples that we were confident that there was not a widespread event. The state said, basically, it's at whatever number you think are necessary. They would not, would not name a number, but they concurred with our approach when we talked about how we were going to do it. So that, and then, what do we do from here? We did get a notice violation, because that's a violation of a maximum contaminant level. The number that you want is zero. The glowing result that we had, the effervescent result that we had, if not glowing in that term, meant that there was positive E. coli and a violation. So as part of that, because we got the violation, we have a 30-day period to prepare what's called a Level 2 assessment, which is a look at the distribution system, any events that may have been occurring at that time, that may have contributed to this, was there a line break in the area, was there a large fire that changed the flow of water, you know, all those different events. Did we change the treatment process? No, we didn't. But those are the things that we're required to look at, to try to identify what was the source of the issue, just as we identified that we believe it is the faucets, we will document that procedure that we went through to disinfect it. And that is the, the second part of that assessment is find and fix the problem. So we've gone through that effort, we believe, to find and fix what was the source of the bacteria. We are also going to, all these 203 sites we've had on our list for a while, we're going to reassess all of those, see if there are sites, you know, because these are common at most residential now. Are there's, but there's still some of the old style that aren't freeze, we don't have problems with those, so those would be an option, we can use those. We may be able to install our own sample stations in some locations, and we may be able to establish more interior samples. There are issues with contamination on interior samples. At your kitchen sink, you may think you're fine, but that little aerator can attract, you know, accumulate, and you could get something growing there. So that's another thing about if we do an indoor sample, if we come to your house, we need to take your faucet, take the aerator apart, we need to take the faucet apart, we need to disinfect it, put it back together, take the sample, you know, 15 to 30-minute process. Folks may not want to wait to have a stranger in their house doing it.
The key is, we're testing the water supply, not the tool, not the fixture.
Yes. So we'll be doing a review of that, we'll be doing a comprehensive look at our procedures and our, like I said, our sample stations, and whatever we can do to prevent this from occurring in the future, we will do.
What's the estimate of our total number of counts now, in terms of, in the system?
Total number of accounts, somewhere between 23,000 and 24,000, I believe.
That's COB only, or?
That's COB only.
But we are a regional provider.
Yes, we're also a regional provider. And that was another, when we did our retesting after making the repairs, we also, our municipal partners collected samples at the point of entry or on their side of our meter with them, and we analyzed those for bacteria also, all those came back negative, from Gibsonville, Elon, Alamance, Ospey, Pot River.
Bob, cases where a boil water notice goes out over an entire system like this are fairly rare. You mentioned High Point. Are there steps that we could take in the future when we have one positive that would enable us to target down to a smaller section so that if there is a second positive?
So we talked with the state that if this were to happen again, after we got that first positive, E. coli, if there is a way to, say, valve off the main lines, separate the line that's serving, the main line that's serving that property, we could set up a temporary line like between hydrants and connect any other properties, but isolate that property, we could go ahead and do that clean repair even, you know, we could go right to, jump to replace the faucet if we thought we needed to. But anyways, when, at the time we do that second test, take the surrounding perimeter and other tests in the system, if we can prove, even if that sample site comes back positive, if we can show that everything else around it is negative, then we don't, we just do the boil water notice for that targeted area. Again, this was so rare, this came up, we had already, you know, we thought we were doing, you know, the quickest way to move forward would be to get that second test. By the time we got up with the state, it was too late to stop that, start that process, the quickest way forward, unfortunately, and I made the decision that we need to do the system-wide, and that's the quickest way that we could get out from under it. Otherwise, we would have been another 24 hours if we went through that isolation process. The other issue, the other way to do that is if you can show that this particular, like sample site is isolated hydraulically, our system is all interconnected. But for example, if this was a newer apartment complex that was served with one individual master meter and had a reverse pressure zone backflow preventer, which is code now, we could say that this apartment building is isolated, and the boil water is just for them. Again, this was individual meters, that, just like a residential meters for each unit, so that wasn't an option either.
The restaurant owners in Graham said, "Thank you, love." It's a Friday night.
And that, I mean, that was Alamance County Health Department, they were involved in these discussions the whole way, as we were planning, and had to roll this boil water notice out, and then they had to get word out to the restaurants, yeah.
Harold, you remember, I'm sure Bob does, and David, I remember vividly 14 years ago the first CAFRA we went through, and Tom McGowan did his speech, and he talked about our biggest financial liability was the infrastructure of our water and sewer system, and the depreciation of it, and how to keep up with, you know, keeping it current. And we put a plan in place then, and fortunately, under Bob's leadership and our program, our enterprise fund, our water and sewer fund is helpful, and it's very sustainable, and we've had wastewater treatment upgrades, we've had our water treatment facility upgrades, Jordan Lake rules, we did some significant work to our facilities then, we've worked on dams to be sure our water supply was solid, we've done a lot of things and spent millions, millions of dollars, that this money's been set aside for, and we continue to work very strategically to see that those things are taken care of, so that the public is safe and our water supply is pristine, and I've got the utmost confidence in it, knowing what I've known for many years. And so I applaud you guys for the work you've done.
And also, our fire department works for some flushing, too.
Yes, yes.
Which is a big part, when you're in your neighborhood, you can see them at hydrants flushing, and that's, that makes a big difference, too, in terms of water quality in reference to the use of the water itself.
How many miles of pipe do we have? 439 something?
Around 445, somewhere around there.
Okay.
It's like here, I forget, I used the analogy one time, like here... It's like here, I forget, I used the analogy one time, like here to Philly, I think.
Pennsylvania.
So, Bob, you talked a little about like the Level 2 assessment and what will be happening next. Is it possible for us to kind of get a recap of that at a future work session? Kind of any action steps or things that your department decides to do to help reduce the economic impact in the future? Because there were many businesses that were shut down, there were folks who weren't able to work for a day and a half, and that takes an economic toll on the community. So, if there's some options that we need to think about for your budget to enable you to be more resilient in the future so that our community does not suffer an economic impact the way it did last weekend, that would be very helpful.
Certainly. We've already ordered some backflow preventers, pipe and fire hose. We'll have it stockpiled. We hope this never happens again, but that would be, we would have that available if we need to isolate an area. We had the one pump set up that we could use to pump the chlorine solution. We're going to assemble another apparatus that we have a spare and a backup. Those are not large cost items, but as we do this analysis, we will be looking and seeing what we need.
In this specific situation, when you, it was only one test came back, but as a timeline, you've got to make those tests available to the state correctly that day. So, if you could have got out there, if we could have got there earlier and did what was done with that valve there and then retested, let's say, if we could have got that earlier in the day, if we'd identified that particular location, would then the state still go forth with the boil water if you had retested and it came back negative?
If it came back neg, if the retest came back negative, then it would, there would not have been a boil water notice. So, we could have, after we got the first one, we could have jumped right to, let's flush that service line, replace the faucet. In our experience, that wasn't necessary, but that may be, when we go through this and determine what our standard protocols are, that may be, like I said, isolate, replace.
Because you got to wait 24 hours regardless?
Yeah. But if we're under the first test-
Right.
Then you don't have the boil water notice. And again, we do, at the same time, the first round, we've taken other tests, so we, you know, if there's several that go, that are not, that are negative, or that are positive, then you know that, hey, something's up that has never occurred, so.
Do you have any idea how many single positive tests we get in a given year?
E. coli was one. Total coliform, and in talking with the state, it does seem to be a trend because there's been other water purveyors in the region that have had the two total coliform tests. This was the third or fourth one we've had this year. We did not have one prior to that, going back to February of 2020. So, throughout 2020, basically, we were in good shape.
The Chapel Hill water break that created their situation, was that E. coli?
No, that was a similar, they had boil water notice, but they had the, they had a problem at their treatment plant that was an overfeed of fluoride. They caught it before it went to the distribution system. They had an emergency interconnection with another, maybe Durham or another water provider that hadn't been used, and when they turned that line on, I think they had, they had a pipe failure then.
Yeah.
They had issues, and then that caused the boil water. So, there are other instances that can cause boil water, and depending on the magnitude.
But even things like you were talking about, taking a standard protocol, that if you have one positive E. coli test, you just replace that spigot. We're talking one spigot a year potentially, so not extreme costs, but for that kind of resilience.
How satisfied were we with the notifications we were to make with the community? Is that something we want to look at again? I only heard one, or got an email from one business that was upset that they had not been notified. Was there more of that, or was that the only?
So, our communications staff, you know, issued that, you know, on our behalf. We're required by the law that it has to be in TV and radio, and then all the others are kind of optional. But, and Morgan, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Morgan, if you want to chat about that at all?
Okay, yeah, you can.
Yeah, like Bob said, with the skate note, the patient form, I think it would have to be one of five, and TV and radio were the top two. But yeah, we issued the media release that you saw go out initially. Subsequently, we did one media advisory and then another release to announce when we were able to lift. And we used all of our social channels, we worked with the county, they have the NICSIL system. And so, Yancy King over there at Alamance County EMS was able to help us get that NICSIL notification out that went out to over 8,000 people. And then we also have our blackboard system that does phone call, text, email. And so, we utilized that system as well, worked with the media that you guys probably are, you know, Bob did lots of interviews and did them well. And so, I would say like the overall, I would say John and I probably talked to more residents in a 24-hour period than we have maybe in our careers because our cellphones went out with that NICSIL notification to 8,000 people. So, we got a little bit of a touch of the media and the public. And generally, we had understanding, and people just wanted to know what was happening and just needed information. So, you know, we were able to return all those phone calls and have those conversations. So, yeah, we got some grumbles for sure, and with the business community because obviously there's an economic loss associated with this. So, I think all of us probably spoke to different restaurateurs and different folks that were, you know, frustrated coming off of COVID and this happening and, you know, had those conversations and moved forward with that. So, I think generally there was understanding, and I think the message got out pretty well. We've already started an after-action with our Guilford County EMS with Don Campbell. He sent out for all of us that were involved. So, I know I've filled that out, and then we'll continue to have that conversation. So, I've already noted, you know, my learning points and communications from that, and I think Bob's done that as well. So, I think we're excited as staff to get together and talk about what we've learned from the situation.
We do a mass communication, but as I understand it, it was the county health department that notified restaurants one-on-one.
Yes, sir.
So, that was another issue where, I don't know that I would say it was an issue, but I know there may have been a few that were not contacted. I'd gotten some feedback somewhere, Kathy, but-
Yeah, and Tony was able to be there in our makeshift EOC, I'm calling it, at Belmont, but the county health director. And so, we were really able to time up when we were able to get our communications out and then when he could deploy his staff. So, they were preparing in the background as we were getting our stuff out, and then they started their email communications, is my understanding. And they had, I think, 806 businesses that they had to contact. So, they started with email notification, and then I think he had 30 folks on the ground the next day actually doing walk-in talks. So, it took a fair amount on their staff. They had to pull people in from other departments, and they of course had people on vacation, key people that were at the beach, which happens in the summer, but.
Well, so our GAS folks prepared a map at the request of the department with that location at the center of the map, and then literally plotted every restaurant. So, they used that map and started and worked outward. In case the water was system-wide, they were going to get to the restaurants first that were closest to the source. So, that was part of their strategy to get to those restaurants first. So, if you were at the edges, by design, they didn't make contact with you as quick as the folks who were closer.
Yeah, it took a while for them.
For residents who may not have felt like they got enough communication, they can sign up for notify me, right?
Correct, yeah. And I had a lot of conversation with that, with folks that, you know, called and said, "My neighbor told me this, and I didn't know, how did I not know?" And so, we were able to start taking names and numbers and putting them in our notify-me system. I also have been emailing them to Yancy King at the county to make sure they're in NICSIL too, because those are storm updates and things that we don't do. So, yeah, at BurlingtonNC.gov/notify-me, you can sign up for all those notifications. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Other questions for Bob or Morgan? Oh, I appreciate that in-depth recap.
Well, I appreciate it, and I, you know, appreciate our citizens working with us and businesses and just the whole effort by city staff. It was incredible.
Other council comments? I had one citizen reach out with an offer of an opportunity for a donation of private land near downtown for a possible skate park location. I know skate parks are something that come up through our recreation discussion here and there, but I was just wondering if council would be amenable to staff looking at that going forward and bringing some additional information about.
Bob, I know we've had history of maybe some title and D trap doors. I mean, that'd be a big one for Mr. Huffman, I would think.
Yeah.
Have him included in those discussions.
If that's your desire, we'd be glad to take a look at it along with Mr. Reese, who's in charge of risk management. That's where it focuses.
Yeah.
So, we'd be glad to do that if that's what you really want to do.
I mean, I think it's two issues. One, you've got somebody that wants to give land, that's an issue in and of itself. Let's clear that hurdle. If that hurdle's clearable, now we can look at the scope and purpose and see if that's something that we're interested in dealing with. But there's no sense in jumping to second hurdle if the first one's going to trip us. You break that box.
First one being the land.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Hopefully, we have some information to bring y'all in a future session. Yep. All right. Any other council comments? I hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Call those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.